We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call vote, or a roll call please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We'll begin with item number three, the work session with the Florence Industrial Development Authority regarding the Florence Facade Improvement Program. At this time, I will turn over the agenda item to Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Woolridge, and members of the council. Just get situated here real quick. This evening, I'm here to give you a brief on a proposed facade grant program that we've been working on for a while. Bringing a facade grant or facade improvement program back to Florence has been kind of discussed over the last year and a half or so. And FY 2016-17, there was no funding budgeted in the town's budget for this program, but in our current fiscal year, we have $20,000 budgeted to implement this program. So I've done quite a bit of research in other communities around the state to see what they've done. Let me make sure. Well, just pardon me for a moment. Can I have some assistance here? There we go. That arrow.
That's the right button.
So, the purpose of the facade grant program is to alleviate some of the slum and blight that we've experienced in the Florence downtown redevelopment area over the last decade or so. The program, the facade program, really is designed to encourage economic activity. It is a 50/50 matching grant that is reimbursable. And what that means is a participant in the facade grant program would expend up to $10,000 and submit the receipts and be reimbursed for $5,000 worth of expenses directly related to a facade grant program. And so, the grant applications would be processed and awarded on a first come, first served basis. Eligible participants would be property owners and tenants of commercial buildings within the Florence redevelopment area. Commercial tenants, if they're just renting a property, they would have to have written approval from the property owner at the time of application. And applicants could apply more than once, but could only receive one award within any five-year period. Now, the program is tied to our Florence redevelopment area, and I believe everyone should have a map of that area. I've got it back here. It's difficult to see on the screen, but it basically encompasses North and South Main Street to include the property owned by the town to the north and School District to the south. But the intent of the facade program is to focus strictly on commercial buildings in this designated area to alleviate the slum of blight. So, the types of improvements that would be allowed in this program would include facade repair and restoration, your typical improvements, paintings, awnings, anything on the front of the building, ADA compliance projects, anything to improve accessibility, landscaping, the demolition of obsolete structures, which would mean a building addition that had been put on in previous years that may not be appropriate to that particular building. And then, the addition of patio and outdoor space, which would encourage people to congregate on Main Street in the commercial area. Improvements that would not be included under the facade grant program would be new building construction, interior modifications of any kind, roofs, any items that typically would not be allowed by the town at all, and working capital, things specifically related to a business. So this is strictly for bricks and mortar facade in our commercial area. Now, we're proposing that the Florence Industrial Development Authority manage this program, and the main reason for that is that town staff is concerned about the gift clause and any potential issues we might have with directly contributing to a commercial project in the private sector. So we've reached out to the Florence Industrial Development Authority to see if they'd be interested in partnering on this program to help us facilitate making these investments in our downtown. So the general idea would be that town staff would receive the applications for a facade grant, or facade grant. There would be a review committee associated with the IDA, hopefully comprised of people that have some sort of experience in the field of design or building construction, that sort of thing. And this would kind of give an extra element of oversight for the program. And then ultimately, each application would be approved by the IDA. And of course, having this kind of structure is really to encourage good design, good projects, as well as restore and rehabilitate some of our commercial buildings in the downtown. So the process by which people would be able to apply for the program would be to complete pretty much a basic application with points of contact, any approval that might be necessary from a property owner, and then good description of the project. And then the IDA would review and eventually approve the project, and then issue a notice to proceed. At that point, then the applicant would need to come to the town and apply for any building permits that might be necessary, as well as submit the project for review by the Historic District Advisory Commission. So as this process flows, at the end of it, once the project is complete, there would be an inspection of the improvements to make sure that they comply with what was agreed upon, and then at that time, reimbursement would be made, you know, for the cost of the project included in that award. So that is a very basic overview, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And before I do, though, I'd like to bring up Barb Kelly from the Industrial, she's the president of the Industrial and Development Authority, and just to say a few words about this.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Walters, Vice Mayor Woolridge, and council members. It's an honor for us to be here to try to partner with the town on the facade grant, the improvement that we're hoping will go forth for this. All of our, sorry, all of our members that are here, you know, are very enthusiastic about this process. We are, you know, we want to partner, we want to be here for the town to help and to make sure our downtown area is thriving. And we feel this is a really good way, you know, for us to partner with you to get part of that going. Do you have any questions for us, or?
I do. First, thank you for being here this evening. And it was a lovely presentation. Just two items that I'd like to clarify before some other questions. In regards to the 50/50 matching grant, is it per building or is it per property owner?
Madam Mayor, we may need to clarify that a little bit in the program, but typically the intent is per building.
Okay. Excellent, because then I was even going to scaffold it down further to say, you know, would it need to be an owner or could it be a tenant? Because I believe the overall strategic goal is to make sure that our Main Street is, you know, looking very nice and to show that we're open for business and reduce that. I don't want to use the word blight, I really don't like that word.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, misconception.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Billingsley.
It can be a tenant with, as long as there's cooperation from the property owner and sign off by the property owner.
Excellent. Council, is there any questions that you'd like to?
Well, I want to thank that, yeah. We started down this road, what, two years ago?
Yes, sir.
They have been so enthusiastic about getting this program going. I'm just pleased that we're finally getting there. So my question to our coordinator is, what's the dates now? What's the schedule? When can we start the applications and?
At the town council's pleasure, we'd like to bring this item back to you at the next council meeting for approval. And then, once the program is approved, and would, at that time, we would approve the program, as well as a contract for services with the IDA. Once that's complete, we can put this program on the street. And by that time, we've already discussed having a marketing program associated with this and having a concerted effort to get the word out to all of the property owners and businesses in the redevelopment area. So we want to make sure everyone's aware that this program is available to them in that particular area. So we can do that, you know, within 30 days.
Great.
Councilmember Larson.
Hi, thank you for being here, and I really look forward to this program. I just had some questions about, I know obviously it's on a reimbursement process, which is great, but it says here that if they will get the notice to proceed once the IDA approves it, but then they have to go through the building permit process, as well as possibly the historic committee? What if the historic committee or their permits are denied, modified, if there needs to be some things that are changed, do they have to then reapply? Or how does that process work as far as the grant is concerned?
Since this is a relatively small program, and we're a small community, I think it's important that we are flexible. If there are changes that come about after the notice to proceed has been issued, it should be able to be brought back to the IDA and modified, don't you think? Am I speaking for you?
No, yes, that's right. Yes. We are willing to work with the property owners, you know, we're not trying to be exclusionary. We want, you know, a vibrant downtown.
Okay. Just as long as there's some type of process or steps there so that that can be modified?
It would basically revert back to step two, or whatever that might be, to modify the application and go through it. If it's a change to the project that's recommended by town staff in order to get the building permit or pass HDAC, then more than likely, you know, it's just a matter of changing paperwork at that point. So I wouldn't foresee any issues from the grant perspective.
Just want to minimize the amount of hoops that they would have to jump through to get to that point.
Councilmember Wall.
First of all, thank you very much for bringing this to fruition. I'm excited to see it happen. I'm not sure how far $20,000 is going to go, so hopefully, depending on the success of this budget item, we can carry it forward in future years. I do have a question about financial responsibility. I'm assuming that there will be some effort made to verify estimates that are provided by the applicants, both before and after the project is completed and application for distribution of the funds is made, especially as it relates to the entire project, not just the grant amount.
I think you raise a good point, Councilmember Wall. And we will incorporate, I couldn't give you exact language right now, but I think it's important to address that within the program to make, and if you've been around construction projects and so forth, you can kind of get an idea, but it'd be nice to have something concrete in our program.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Wall, I think that part of the process will kind of work itself out, because if there's permits required, a cost estimate has to be provided, so we'll know that number. And one of the things I know on the drafts that I worked on for this program was that that reimbursement at the end has to be supported by receipts. It can't be on conjecture, et cetera. There's actual hard information that has to be provided before that reimbursement can take place, so I think it'll work itself out. I do have a recommendation based on the last question. Of course, it's going to be up to the IDA, how they comprise the evaluation committee and how the evaluations are done, but in order to mitigate Councilwoman Larson's question, it might make sense on the evaluation committee to have somebody from HDAC and somebody from Development Services on that committee.
I agree. And also, going off of how far will $20,000 go, there's great opportunities, especially between the partnership of Jennifer Evans, who's been amazing at writing grants for the town. I think we can all agree we've brought in more revenue this year than we have in any prior years, and having that partnership with IDA to increase the amount of funds that we could potentially bring to that program.
One other question. In your, one of your slides, you said the applicant could only apply once every three or four years, or five years, or something?
Applicant could apply more than one time, but only have one award within five years. So say a project doesn't come to fruition after an application has been submitted, that individual, that applicant, wouldn't be penalized for that, and maybe, you know, had, who knows? There's a variety of reasons why a project doesn't happen. So that person would be allowed to come back later on and reapply.
But if we have an applicant who owns multiple buildings, is that, can he apply for each building, or is he an applicant one time?
I think the intent of the program is you can apply for each building, each property, and it's not based on who owns it.
Okay, thank you.
And in the application, a suggestion would just be, instead of applicant, maybe change that verbiage to reflect per building or per parcel.
I think it needs to be more clear. Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything from the IDA that you'd like to share as well, or any other? Yes, sir.
I just have a minor question about the, on, right, and this is, we, this is a fluid document, or set of documents, so I'm not really overly concerned about it, aside from the fact I'd just like to understand where we play. On the project itself, the indemnification is the one I'm not overly concerned with. There's something I want to know where we play as far as the entities that are indemnified. Right now, we have the town of Florence, its agents, officers, officials, and employees. And I just want to know where the IDA falls within that, assuming that we are also indemnified in some form or fashion.
I would consider you an agent, but I'm going to defer that for verification with our town manager.
IDA, separate quasi-governmental entity, would defer to cliff, but I don't see any reason why the IDA couldn't be included right alongside of the town. We take no responsibility for the design, the implementation. Clearly, this is going to be licensed folks that do this work, they will be holding that liability with respect to the project. All we're doing is providing funding.
Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
I just think it's important that a lot of this goes back to the verbiage and how we market this and how we present this. I think this is a unique opportunity for the town, for the IDA, for the business owners. So getting back to Kristen's point, if we are jumping through a million hoops, and this is another rigid application process to get through it, I think we lose all the momentum. So I think a lot of the energy and the words that we use as a group, with all of us here, I think is going to be really critical to how this goes off, because there should be a lot of excitement around this program. I think it's, I think it's really unique, and this is what everybody's asked. You know, I know when everybody was running for elected office, it was brought up a lot of times, hey, what's, what's your plan? A lot of this was, this is what I, this I want to see. I think everybody has a shared vision and a dream to see this come to, this come to fruition. So I think, I think for us as an IDA and partnering with you guys, I think as much communication and excitement and marketing that we can get around this, the better. So the more, the more dialogue, if you guys have questions throughout this process, you know, John's our liaison, love to get that back to us, so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. Because sometimes with some of these programs, we can roll it out, and then somebody gets hung up on the application process, and that gets spread around to other people, and we could lose all the effort and energy that we're putting into this. I think everybody's intent is spot on, and it's exciting. And I just want to encourage, if anybody hears any questions or any concerns, get them back to us as quickly as possible, because we want to, we want to clear that up and keep the momentum going. So I guess that's my only request for the process and program.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know who would answer this, but let's, if, could we possibly publicize taking donations, whether, from people to donate to this program, to the IDA specifically for this program? And would that be tax, be a tax write-off for the people if they donated towards the fake aid program?
No, C3.
If we could get, you know, donations from corporations or individuals to help the program along? There's a lot of people that, you know, do care about the community that might be willing to donate funds towards something like this.
Excellent idea. We need to go back and think about that a little bit. I just asked, and they're not a tax exempt 501(c)(3).
Oh, okay.
However, the government can allow tax, tax, how do you want to, I'm looking for a term, Joe.
Donations.
Donations, and allow people credit on their federal tax return.
Tax credit donation.
So we will check on that between now and the next council meeting and try to have a good answer for you, Councilmember Hawkins.
Okay. Well, I just think it'd be a great deal if there'd be a little more incentive for people to participate. No, I think it's a great program, I'm all for it. I mean, it's well put together, and I'm glad to see the IDA is willing to go after it.
Now, that really is a good idea, Bill, because there's a lot of people that care about the community, that want to give back to the community and remember some of these buildings from when they were younger, when they were growing up, or the pictures that they've seen from our history, because we do have a lot of rich history in our town. And to be able to give back and bring them back to life would have significant meaning. Okay, is there any other questions, comments? All right, while I feel this was a productive work session, I'm looking forward to this being brought to life and the program implemented. And again, like Ty had mentioned, making it, you know, as easy as possible, streamlined, well-publicized. I know that Mark will make sure that it's in the paper. I know our IT and staff will make sure that it's publicized on the website. IDA, I'm not sure if you have a website or not, I'm sorry, I should know, but if you don't, maybe get one, and we can, you know, partner that together.
Ms. Mayor, there's one other thing I just was thinking of. I know it said, it broke it down, but I didn't see anything about signage. And on some of the fake aids, on historical fake aids, some of it is built right into the building, you know, on some of the older historical buildings. I'm wondering if that, if signage would be qualified?
Councilmember, yes, it does. It, signage is included in the program.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Excellent.
I just want to thank the council's time for hearing us out, and just to reiterate what my fellow commissioner said, we are very eager to work with the council and all the business owners of town, so that we can make this process streamline, as you, as you mentioned, so that our town will be vibrant and our Main Street will be beautiful again with all these buildings. So we're really hoping that the business owners or the tenants will take advantage of this. And we will work with staff to make sure it is streamlined and that it's not bogged down, that it's undue necessary, you know, red tape, because we do want to see this succeed. And we would like to come back to you in another year to have this keep going, so that our town will be alive and vibrant.
Excellent. Now, I do see some members of public that came out this evening. Is there anybody that would like to come up to the work session and add anything? All right. With that, we will make a motion to close the work session.
Oh, there's.
I don't think we need a motion, actually. Scratch that. We're closing the work session, and we are going to take a three-minute break and come back, so we can begin at the posted time of 6:00 PM. All right, it is 6:00 PM. If we can read adjourn. Thank you. Item number four, we're going to continue with a moment of silence, followed by the Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and ever so strong. Moving on to item number seven, 7A is a presentation of Years of Service Award presented to Terry Tryon for.
Five and six.
Oh, I am so sorry. I apologize, I went out of order. Call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Do we have any call to the publics this evening? With that, we are closing call to the public. Item number seven is our presentation. We will begin with Years of Service Award presented to Mr. Terry Tryon for 20 years of dedicated service.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's with great pleasure that I ask Mr. Terry Tryon, Lieutenant Tryon, to come forward. Tonight, we're honoring Lieutenant Terry Tryon for 20 years of service to the town of Florence and his, and our residents. In fact, it's actually 25 years of cumulative experience, because he was a reserve officer before he was a full-time employee. He was hired on full-time in 1989, and also went to work, left us for some reason, went to work for Pinell County for three years. But the good news is, he came back, because he loves us so much. Came back to work for us. He was promoted to sergeant in 2003, and then to lieutenant in 2007. Lieutenant Tryon assists Chief Hughes, and myself, on a daily basis, and serves as our second of command in the Florence Police Department. I wanted to take this opportunity to honor Lieutenant Terry Tryon for his 20 years of dedicated service to the town of Florence, if you'd join me.
Would you like to say a few words?
No.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for this award. Like Mr. Billingsley said, I do have 25 cumulative years with Florence. I did five years as an officer, went to county, and then came back under Chief Padilla. And I was thinking on the way in, I don't think I chose this community, I think it chose me, and I've had a great 20 years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. David Elliott. Next, we have Mr. David Elliott, if he'd like to join me up here. In today's times, you don't often see a public servant for an entity that has worked for that entity for 35 years. I think it says a lot about Mr. Elliott, but I think it says a lot about the town of Florence, and how we treat our employees, and the level of camaraderie that exists here within our community. David started with the town as a grounds maintenance worker in 1982. During the 90s, he served in the Streets Division, and also in the Sanitation Division, and moved to mechanic in 2003 with equipment maintenance. We also discovered through our research that David serves, served as our citizens, served our citizens as a part-time firefighter from 1989 to 2002? Nine and a half years. Want to provide congratulations to David, and please join me in thanking him for his 35 years of service to the town of Florence.
This is a beautiful word, I want to let you know. As the light was coming down, all the colors came down through it, so.
Matches his shirt.
Yes. Make a nice smile. Yeah, wow, would you like to say a few words, please? 35 years is a long time, so.
Madam Mayor and council, it's been a long time. As Rebecca Collins, I worked with her a little bit in financing. I started in, it was now the fitness center, it used to be the town hall, with Eddie Taylor, and cleaning the rooms, the office at that time. Then, I heard about the fire department, and I joined them. Then, what we did, Eddie Taylor and I would do grounds maintenance throughout the day and that kind of thing, and I worked myself up through the ropes, the public works, the street department, through the sanitation, through the mechanics, and so on and so forth, so. The public works area was behind the bank on Main Street. So, it was a real small, where the high-profile place is right now, be our public works. So, then we got the new building on Warner Street, and building then, we had so far to go with it, then we had an addition to the building, which made it bigger, which we really needed, so. Anyway, it's been a long road, it's been a happy one. I've learned a lot, did a lot, seen people come and go. The happy people are there now, so, I thank you very much.
Item number eight is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time that agenda item is called. The first item is item A, Resolution Number 1641-17, Adoption of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, Approving the Final Plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 3, and Authorizing Execution by the Town Manager of Supporting Documents. Item B, Resolution 1642-17, Adoption of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, Approving the Final Plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 7, and Authorizing Execution by the Town Manager of Supporting Documents. Item C, Resolution Number 1643-17, Adoption of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, Approving the Final Plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 37, and Authorizing Execution by the Town Manager of Supporting Documents. Item D, Approval of the Submittal of the Fiscal Year 2018, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Funding Application for a Participate Matter, Particulate Matter 10, Certified Street Sweeper. Item E is Ratification of the Submittal of the Fiscal Year 2018, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority Technical Assistance Application for a Clean Water, Wastewater Project. Item F, Approval of the Submittal of Fiscal Year 2022, Penal County Arterial and Bridge Program Funding Application for State Route 287, 79B Intersection Improvement Project. Item G, Approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement Number 2017-03 with Penal County to Participate in the Penal County Narcotics Task Force and to Accept Reimbursement of Employee Overtime Costs and Related Expenses. H, Approval of the August 7th and August 21st, 2017 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. And item I is to Receive and File the Following Board and Commission Minutes, February 22nd and March 29th, 2017 Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or council that would like any item removed?
Yes, I'd like to have A, B, and C removed.
Okay, items A, B, and C requested removal by Councilmember Anderson. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items A, B, and C.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Councilmember Anderson.
I have, you know, a couple of questions. This is primarily about some of the legal ees going on. We're a little sensitive now with about PUDs and things like that. So, one of the first questions I had, and I want to thank Chris for answering a lot of my questions today, but I found another one since we talked. The PUD talks about that the preliminary plat applications were supposed to have a public hearing. Do we have public hearings on these? Are you aware of what's going on?
We did have a public hearing for the preliminary plat.
I can't hear you, I'm so sorry.
We did have a public hearing on the preliminary plats before, when they went to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. In the future, put that in, with dates that you have those, so, so we'll know that you had them. Okay, my next question, which is more of a legal question, and I'll ask this of Cliff. The, the PUD talks about an HOA, and that Polte is supposed to have, well, it says that there should be an Anthem at Merrill Ranch HOA. I don't think that exists, and maybe the Polte people can address that. There's, there's three different corporations that are involved at Merrill Ranch. The one council, which is the oversight of the other two, clearly state in their documents, and their covenants, that they're not an HOA.
Mayor, members of the council, I, I am not familiar with the structure of their HO, the Polte HOA, however, those, those would be covered, those issues would likely be covered by their CCNRs, which are a private document. And I believe there are a couple of representatives from Polte here tonight that could hopefully shed some light on, on your question.
Well, do the CCNRs have precedent over the PUD?
Well, they're a separate document. I mean, they, they control in the private arena how they're functioning, and usually the developer would have the control over the HOA at some level. Go ahead, Brent, I know you're grabbing the mic.
Just, just to clarify to, to mayor and council, the PUD or the Planned Unit Development is a zoning overlay. It's a, it's a legal document. It holds a precedent over any covenants and restrictions, which is what we're speaking to, from the zoning perspective, regarding how the development is put together, how many units, what the density are, the, the provisions that would be included, that's all included in the Planned Unit Development. The, the CCNRs, the covenants and restrictions are a separate document that is private to the developer, and typically is in place when the plats themselves are, are approved individually. We do have members of the Polte team tonight, if they'd like to come forward and answer this question.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, I am Jared Baxter with the Baxter Design Group. I represent Polte and Southwest Value Partners on development, out in the Anthem at Merrill Ranch development. Just to follow up on what Brent has said here, when the PUD was, was presented, it was done prior to any kind of development happening in that area. As part of that, it was anticipated HOA would be in process. The actual legal name of that HOA is not something that needs to be addressed in a PUD, and it's something that's not addressed in the past in PUDs. What it is, is a, just a general statement that there would be an HOA providing CCNR coverage for the Anthem development. In, as much as we've been developing in that area, we have two distinct type of properties in the area. We have a, we have a Sun City portion of the development, which you guys are familiar with, and then we have a Parkside portion of the development. Those areas have very distinct differing needs and differing rules for that area. Hence, the formation of two separate HOAs that cover each one of those development areas. As such, with two development, separate entities, there needed to be a master developer out there, which was then formed that oversees the two separate entities for Parkside and Sun City, and controls the development as a whole out in that area. So, I understand the PUD that says an Anthem at Merrill Ranch HOA. It was nothing more than just a general statement. It was not a, hey, this is a legal entity that is going to be formed out there at that time. Since that time, we have formed those legal entities, and they do control the CCNRs, and they are controlled privately at that point in time.
But the, the overriding, what was it called, the council, is not a homeowners association?
It doesn't have to say homeowners association to be acting as a homeowners association, it's just a name.
But it says very specifically, it is not a homeowners association.
I don't want to get into legalese of that, I don't think that's, that's how privately the development is being handled with its CCNRs. I'm not a lawyer and can't speak to the specifics of that.
I'm going to ask our lawyer to check into some of this.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be glad, you're, Mayor, Councilmember Mayor, so I'd be glad to look at it. Again, it's, the CCNRs are a private document, it's not something that the town creates or really has any control over, but I'd be glad to touch base.
I'm talking about the PUD as well as the CCNRs.
Oh, yeah, we, the PUD, yeah, the PUD was adopted along with the development agreement.
The other question that I have about the PUD, and this is not a, no reflection on Polte, but the PUD has been amended several times. Recently, I was told that a PUD to be amended had to be approved by all of the landowners in the PUD. And these amendments were not approved by all the landowners. There was, I think the last one was made in 2010, 2013, something like that.
Mr. Anderson, I, I specifically do not know any other amendments, other than an amendment that was made in 2008 to the PUD. Additional amendments since then, I'm not familiar with, and I don't believe exist.
Well, I saw one dated 2013 today.
That is a PUD amendment that was for the Merrill Ranch development, which is a separate entity from the Anthem and Merrill Ranch development. Two separate developments, two separate owners, two separate PUDs.
Okay, but even the 2008 amendment was not approved by all the owners?
The 2008 amendment was ran through the Planning Commission and through the town council at that point in time, yes.
But, but, the, my question to our lawyer is, does the landowners have to approve the changes to the PUD? We were told recently, in another situation, that all the landowners had to approve any modifications or amendments to the PUD.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, we'll be glad to, to look at that and go over it with Polte.
So, my, my motion is to table item A, B, and C until we get a reading back from our legal counsel on these items.
Can I ask, what is the implications if we table this, or these three items, this evening?
The questions that are being asked, I don't see how they are relevant to current development plats that are being presented to you tonight. They are legal questions regarding HOA, and HOA controlled CCNRs, which the town doesn't control, the town doesn't really enforce at that point in time. So, what we have on the agenda tonight is approval based upon PUD requirements of three final plats. The questions that are being asked by Mr. Anderson have no reflection upon those plats, whether they are approvable or not.
With respect to Unit 37 specifically, the, the owner, Southwest Value Partner, has been trying to sell this unit for some time, has been marketing this unit for some time, and is, part of the sales agreement needs to have a final plat recorded. So, they have been waiting for months for this to come to council. You asked what the implications are, they do, they do not have ability to sell or market this effectively without the final plat being recorded. That's what they've been telling us for some months. This has been probably with the town for three months at least, Unit 37 specifically.
Okay. Mr. Billingsley?
To answer your, your question directly, with the exception of 37, I can't see where we're going. A meeting would hurt regarding the recordation of those individual plats. However, Jared is correct. The questions regarding the HOA and the CCNRs aren't necessarily considerations and approval of the plat. The plat creates the lots, we already know the densities, those have already been decided and approved, and then it creates the engineering plans and the plan set. Those plans have been provided to staff, reviewed by our technical staff, and approved as to the quality, quantity, and applicable standards with respect to our development standards, and, and staff has approved of that. We're not approving amendments to see, to covenants and restrictions, or to zoning at this time. This is creation of lots and approving engineering plans. Chris is correct, in terms of Unit 37, it's not Polte-owned, it's not Polte-controlled. That is Southwest Value Partners. The only thing I wanted to clarify with Chris is although we've had it for three months, it's not that staff has been sitting on that. There have been a number of things that we've had to come to agreement with regarding the landowner to protect Florence moving forward, in terms of how we're going to handle a lot of the same issues that we've dealt with with Polte, how are we going to handle the flood plains? And, and as you know, we just made some decisions on that, on a Polte subdivision, or a Polte unit. Those type of things, we've been working through with Southwest Value Partners, and we finally reached a point where we're in agreement in terms of those provisions that enable us to, to approve that individual plat. I hope that was helpful.
Well, do we need to have a development agreement with Southwest Property before we go on with this?
Mayor, Mr. Anderson, we already have a development agreement with Southwest Value Partners. It's part of the master agreement that we have for all of these parcels. They all fall under the same agreement, and it has been in existence, I believe, since 2003, and it outlines our process by which, how we go forward with approving individual pieces of these subdivisions.
So, we don't have to have an agreement with Southwest Property? The developer?
Development agreement does not run, oh, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Anderson, the development agreement does not run with the owner. The development agreement runs
Oh, I know that.
Runs with the land.
I know that.
And the land for Unit 37.
Can we call for the question?
Can we call for the question? There's been a motion on the floor, but I haven't heard a second, so.
Okay.
If there's no second, can I make a motion and we approve items A, B, and C?
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Can I make a comment about these three items?
Yes.
And I don't think this necessarily involves you, but as a resident of Sun City, I had been approached with a question about the plat for Unit 37 because it is owned by someone other than Pulte. And way back when that land was sold to Southwest Value Partners, there was concern on the part of homeowners in both Parkside and Sun City as to how those homes would be incorporated into either Parkside or Sun City in terms of the amenities that we all share, whether it's the community center, the pools, et cetera. So, I think in the, going forward, when and if this property is sold to a builder, I think those questions are going to come up and maybe we could forestall those questions if that information could be shared.
I can probably share part of that with you right now, is those members, those houses are part of the Anthem HOA. They will be assessed the HOA fees, similar to what any other house out there, at the same rate that's being assessed to homes built by Pulte. They will have the right for use of the community centers and of all the open spaces and the amenities that are associated with the HOA. As part of a new builder coming in, if a new builder buys it and develops it, that builder will then have to present a design review, not only to the Town of Florence, but also to the HOA, to approve what type of housing, what type of product are being placed out on those lots. The idea is we don't want to diminish the value of houses that currently exist out there. So, there are very specific design requirements that are required, not only by the town, but also by the HOA. So, those builders will go through a dual process of approval, through a planning commission, design review, and then also through a Pulte HOA design review.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I would like to ask one other thing. It's been over a year ago when we talked to staff about having a review with Pulte on the PUD and the CCNRs and the applicable documents. That's never happened, and I guess it's not going to happen.
What we can do is, moving forward, since this is an agenda, that's why I was trying to segue out, in the upcoming council meetings, Brent, will you please coordinate with Pulte and get a work session together so that way we do have some new council members as well as some, you know, varying levels of experience, and I think that would be a beneficial work session to have between the two parties.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much for your time. Item number nine is new business. Under new business, item A is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with Tischler Bice Incorporated for the completion of a developmental impact fee study and an infrastructure improvement plan in an amount not to exceed $99,640. Jess, can you provide the background knowledge that we need?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Item 9A in front of you this evening is a contract that was negotiated between the town staff and Tischler Bice to complete a development impact fee or a DIF study and an IIP infrastructure improvement plan or an IIP. So, Councilmember Glean has worked on many of these in the past and is well aware of some of the intricacies. This is something that cities and towns, not just Florence, have to go through every five years. State statute and state law requires us to identify our fees every five years. There's lots of laws, lots of rules in place that identify the types of fees that can be collected, and additionally, the type of, how those dollars are spent for particular projects. So, as we go through this study, the consultant will come in and identify any types of future expectations for growth, identify projects that have been approved by council, either in previous action or in future action as part of this process, and then identify our development agreements, so forth and so on, collect a lot of data, and then come to a conclusion with regards to how, what the IIP and what the impact fees will be moving The contract itself, as you see in front of you, we made many, created many steps within there to have interaction, not only with the town council, but residents, so that there's plenty of input provided, so that this is something that isn't steamrolled through. There's going to be lots of input throughout the process from staff, from council, from residents, from anybody that's concerned or wants to have some input on the process. We are under a bit of a timeline. This is something that needs to be done by July, or excuse me, by June 30th next year. I think the expectation is to complete this study sometime in the spring of 2018, a few months in advance, but it's something that is time sensitive. Part of this process, staff, we did distribute a RFP, or request for proposal. We received four proposals from the private sector. Those proposals ranged in experience and skill sets, and with regards to the cost of the study, ranged from $85,000 up to $118,250. Town staff has reviewed the proposals and is recommending to Town Council to enter into an agreement with Tischler Bice in an amount not to exceed $99,640 for the total completion of the studies. In the audience this evening is Mr. Carson Bice with Tischler Bice, and he's here to introduce himself and tell, let council know a little bit about his experience in Arizona and otherwise, and give some real brief, high-level details about what to expect over the next few months.
Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm Carson Bice, president of Tischler Bice. We have done development impact fees for the county. We've also done them for Apache Junction, Coolidge, Casa Grande, Eloy, and Maricopa, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to add the Town of Florence to our resume. As most of you know, SB 1525 was passed four or five years ago and drastically changed the landscape for development impact fees within the state of Arizona. And I think one of the challenges with implementing the law was that there wasn't any interpretation on a lot of the issues. And frankly, there hasn't been much interpretation on a lot of the issues because there haven't been any major lawsuits filed. And so, but one of the things that I think we bring to this assignment is the fact that we have done more impact fees in the state of Arizona than any other firm. We've done over 15 SB 1525 updates, and we've worked for over 30 communities in the state doing impact fees, so we bring a great depth of experience. And we've been through the wars and in the trenches on a lot of the issues. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the interpretations or questions from SB 1525 still remain, but I think the fact that we have such diverse experience around the state serves us well for navigating the issues associated with the Town of Florence's impact fee update. Some of those issues are, you know, looking at the development projections. You know, one of the things we're finding nationwide, not only in the state of Arizona, is that as you come out of the Great Recession, it's now harder more than ever to make development projections. And development projections are a major component of this type of update because depending on the methodology you choose, the development projections may leave the general fund on the hook if we do a plan-based approach versus some other approach, which then leaves the general fund quite exposed from a financial perspective. One of the cornerstones, as Jess touched on, of our approach is we've always been big believers in public outreach, and that's now a requirement as part of the Arizona Act. But we always encourage three to four public meetings with the home builders community. We also are big believers in using development impact fees to achieve town, city, or county, you know, land use, transportation, economic development, and affordable housing goals and policies. And so, we try to do a lot of outreach with you, the elected officials, when there are jump-off points, if you will, relative to specific fee categories. So, I think you can anticipate one or two work sessions with me and my staff to talk about different directions you may want to go relative to different fee categories because they could have ramifications. As I mentioned, you may get a higher fee under a plan-based approach, but you need to be educated on what the pros and cons of that approach would be versus another, and your wisdom and input would be welcome. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Council, do you have any questions? Well, thank you for making the journey out tonight. We are looking forward to those work sessions, and I know that under the leadership with Mr. Billingsley as well as Jess, you'll have the information necessary to conduct the study as well as partner it with our strategic plan that we've worked so diligently on over the past year and a half, almost two years. So, we're looking forward to seeing what you bring and making progress in our town.
Thank you.
Managers report. Mr. Billingsley?
Need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, for approval to enter into a contract with Tischler Bice Inc. for the completion of a development impact fee study and an infrastructure improvement plan in an amount not to exceed $99,640.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I didn't want to make that motion because I didn't want to spend the money, but the state mandates us to, so we will move forward. Managers report, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm going to do my jockeying back and forth with my vision issues again. I've got a number of items tonight, but some good stuff as usual. First off, wanted to announce that our last showing of the documentary USS Indianapolis was so successful, based on lots of requests from the community, we will be conducting a re-showing of the USS Indianapolis, the legacy. That screening will take place on Veterans Day, and Veterans Day is November 11th at 1:00 PM. And similar to last time, following the documentary, we're going to have a Q&amp;A session with Harpo Selaya, who was honored this last Saturday. It was so popular last time, it sold out, and I believe we had to turn people away. So, please register in advance for the event and to make sure that you have a seat for the Q&amp;A and to watch the movie, and do that registration through Jasper Halt, who is our library manager, and his phone number is 520-868-8311, or you can stop by the library. Next pertinent piece of information is the Town of Florence Police Department will be hosting a car seat training, an event on September the 18th at the Anthem Parkside Community Center, and that's from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So, please bring your car and your own car seat to the event, and our folks will show you how to install that car seat properly, as well as inspect your existing install of your car seat to see if it's safe and proper. Anything to add, Chief?
Can we scratch that one if it happened?
They did a great job with that today. That happened today from 8:00 to 4:00.
Oh.
They did a wonderful job.
Sorry. Today is the 18th. Wow. Thanks, Jess. Jess handed me that today and said, "Read it." Okay, well, it's already over. Next one, this is a letter that I received. On September 11th, 2017, the Property Tax Oversight Commission met, wow, that's a diligent group, they met on a holiday, to review primary property tax levy limits for counties, cities, towns, and community colleges per ARS 4217003. Upon our review of the levy limit for your governing body as enclosed, the commission found it to be in proper order. The commission also determined that your jurisdiction was in compliance with the truth in taxation notices and hearing requirements. So, congratulations, Joe, and the Budget Committee. Tomorrow will be the commissioning, not that we're going to have a ribbon cutting or anything at the signal, but tomorrow will be the commissioning of the traffic signal at State Route 79 and diversion dam road. Now, that will be a hectic day for anybody who travels through that intersection. It will start with striping, and then the various signal technicians will be out there and getting ready to get that signal turned on and operational, so there will be variations in that signal throughout the day, but ADOT hopes that will be all done at 9:00 PM tomorrow. That's one day ahead of schedule. They weren't supposed to start the project till tomorrow, and it was supposed to be completed on Wednesday, but if any of you drove through that intersection today, you'll notice that ADOT was out there all day working today. So, tomorrow, we will have the diversion dam 79 signal. The Fire and Police Department wanted me to thank specifically Councilwoman Larson. I'm sure that she didn't want anybody to know this, but she actually went and purchased treats for our police and our fire personnel and provided those to their stations on September 11th. So, from the staff to you, Councilwoman, thank you very much. And lastly, this was kind of cool. This doesn't happen very often in my world, but I was given a whole stack of thank you letters today from the police chief, and these are all from students from Santana Heights K-8 School, and there are probably 40 of them here. I'll read a couple of them into the record. First is from the teacher. "Thank you, Florence Police Department, for your service. My second grade class at Santana Heights K-8, and I want to thank you for all you've done for our community and this country. I hope you enjoy the letters. My class and I hope that you will respond to our letters," with a smiley face, so I guess that means you need to do so, Chief. Maybe you ought to visit him in person. Sounds like a good idea. "Sincerely, Ms. Goldsmith and my second grade class. Thank you for your help. My name is Ripley Rene Edgar, and I watch shows about you." I didn't know you were famous, Chief. "Do you look like this?" And she drew a picture of a police officer. "Thank you for your service. My name is McKenzie, and I love Starbucks. Did you go to college?" And I'll read one more. "Thank you for your service. My name is Sophia. I found out about yourself, and I wanted to ask a question." Sophia Ray. So, I think that when you go and visit their class chief, let Sophia Ray ask you a question, and that's it for my report tonight. And get a Starbucks, apparently.
Bring that little girl a Starbucks, or little boy. Maybe we can have ADOT commission the project at the evening hours so traffic isn't impacted in the future.
They're going to try to do it all in one day.
I know. All right, well, thank you very much. Call to the public, is there anybody in the public that would like to say anything at this time? All right. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
Hi, thank you all for being here today. I just wanted to touch base, I'm on the Make a Difference Day Committee, so I just wanted to put a little plug in for that again. It is October 28th. We are looking for people who want to volunteer, if you want to come as a group or as an individual, and we can set you up as a group. One of the major initiatives that we're looking at implementing is having, reach out to the senior community, so whether that's an Anthem or Caliante or down here in Core, wherever it may be. But on the other side of that, we're also looking for people who need help. So, one of the things that we need is people to reach out either to Laura Carter at the Senior Center, Brian Hughes, Allison Feliz. We've got a form that they could fill out. If you contact any of those three, they should have access to it. We can do such things as change air filters, put smoke alarms in, move heavy items, clean gutters, or if there's other things that are needed, that way then we know ahead of time what we can help out with. So, if there's anybody else there that needs help in those fields, reach out to one of the people I've listed. So, just wanted to make people aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Just wanted to mention that tomorrow night on America's Got Talent, Evie Claire will be performing in the finals. The award for the winner will be made on Wednesday night, and if you've been following Evie's saga, her dad- Evie's saga, her dad passed away recently, right after she had been voted into the finals, so this is going to be a very moving performance on her part, I'm sure.
And vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I would like to thank Chief Farrow for putting out his thank you note to all of us. If you didn't see it, he had a nice thank you note from, it was a little girl, and she drew pictures of the emergency vehicles and, you know, was thanking the fire department for all they did for us. It was a nice, nice note. Thank you for sending it out. We need more of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Glean?
Yes, I just wanted to thank all of the town staff that was involved with Harpo Selaya's dedication at the post office on Saturday, all the hard work that you do, your attendance chief, Hughes, and being up front with everyone, and just, it was very personal to me because he was a personal friend of my dad. My dad played basketball with him when he was in high school here, and they were great friends for all of their lives. So, I really appreciate the town's involvement with it, and it was just a wonderful dedication to him and an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
I think everything I was going to say has been said, so I go along with what's already been stated, you know. I'm just, we had beautiful weather for that dedication Saturday. We really, it really was nice, and like you said, the staff did a great job. We really do have a good staff when it comes to events. It's amazing, but anyway, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Walridge?
I'll just ditto about the Harpo event. It was, that's quite an honor for him, as well as our town, when you have to have Congress to pass something for it to happen, that's quite an event. And I would also like to send out my condolences and prayers to Evie and her family, and just let them know that we are thinking about them in their time of bereavement, and that's it. And I will say that our mayor did a great job on her speech on Saturday as well.
Thank you. Council covered everything very well this evening. I'm, actually, I have nothing to say. Everything was covered so well, and we are going to be going into executive session, and with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session?
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? We will come out and adjourn after executive session.